Okay, at this time, I'd like to call to order the Tewksbury Finance Committee Public Hearing for September 22, 2021. And I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you don't mind rising for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is our meeting where we have anyone from the general public to come and ask questions about any of the warrant articles that will be on the special town meeting on October 5. The Finance Committee has already reviewed the warrant articles with the town manager, so we may or may not have any questions for the town manager at this time. Tonight is more for anyone from the Tewksbury community to ask any questions they may have on the articles. If anybody wishes to speak, they'll come up to the podium over here. You'll have to state your name and address. And once public comments are done, then we will open up to the committee for any questions or comments at that time. And once we are done with discussion, the Finance Committee will vote on their recommendation. Okay, so at this time, I would look for a motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay, and since we have some people here for specific articles, I would like to take them out of order. So I'd like to take 16 and 17 first, if I could get a motion for that.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Okay, we will start with Article 6, I believe it was 16.
Sixteen.
Somebody keep me honest here. Okay, so Article 16 is a resident article. The name on it is Christine Chesborough, who I see in the audience. Would you like to make any comments on this, or wait? Okay, does anybody have any questions from the public on Article 16? Seeing none. Any, so given that this is a resident article and does not have any financial impact to the town budgets, I would support a motion to make no recommendation on this article. But I'll open it up to any, any comments or questions. Make motion in a second on no recommendation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, that brings us to Article 17. And I see Ms. Impink in the audience. Would you like to start, or, oh, sorry, and Chris Mullins? If you would like to present your article, or we can just open it up for comments, however you want to proceed.
It doesn't matter, you were available for questions.
Okay. Do we have any public comments or questions? Mr. Johnson.
Steve Johnson, 21st Street. So the members have quite a bit of information that I submitted to them.
And, sorry, can I, I just want to interrupt just one second, just in case people don't know that you're on the.
I'm sorry, I'm the chairman of the planning board, just in case anybody.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm not here on behalf of the planning board, I'm just here as myself, but it is true, I am the chairman of the planning board.
Thank you.
The, I'm sorry, the committee members have a significant amount of information that I sent to them today. It's the same information that I've previously forwarded to the Board of Selectment. It expands on information that I provided to the committee when a similar article was presented at annual town meeting. I think we find ourselves in the same place, which is, we have an article being presented, and again, no information other than pretty much what I'm providing on behalf of that article. The proponents came into the planning board and presented, which really amounted to telling us that the article was being filed. There was no real conversation beyond that. Again, even here this evening, there isn't even a presentation of this article. My concerns, many of which are highlighted in the information you have, you know, obviously I don't have time, nor will I bore everybody by going through it yet again, because, as I just did, nothing's changed in the last six months. All the same problems still exist. This has not been looked at long enough and hard enough. It really should go to the Board of Selectment to be looked at more thoroughly, because nothing is being presented to anyone, truly in support of this article beyond, to be, you know, as respectful as I can, the sophomoric argument of "we can" and "other people do it." An argument that no self-respecting parent would ever accept if their child came to them and said, "Well, other people are doing it." You'd turn them away to happy. If someone came up in front of this board and tried to put forward a request for $100,000 and stood here and said nothing more than, "Well, we can," and other towns have done it, not one person up there would vote for that, if that was all that was said. I believe no one up there would vote for it. I wouldn't speak for you, but I would hope no one up there would possibly recommend the adoption of an article. The reason was that, and nothing more, because that's what you've been given, nothing more. You'll see articles, you'll see comments that say it'll increase competition. I'll skip to that one. So, no evidence at all that we presented to you that any competition will be increased by having a three-year term over a five-year term. The opposite in the package I provided to you, I believe, is the case, that there is no evidence, and I presented the opposite, which is, for example, our own school committee has a three-year term. They've had exactly the same number of competitive races in the last 10 years as the planning board. Three, three out of 10. I don't think anybody's looking to reduce their term to one year to increase competition. One, because it'd be foolish. Two, I don't think you can do it. And three, it wouldn't do it. That's, the fact is, they have a three-year term. It doesn't make for more competition. That isn't the problem. As I've pointed out, I think there are probably a lot of other problems that might be the reasoning why you don't get more competition. In addition, information previously submitted, that nobody's even bothering, it looks like, to even submit this time, suggested that other towns around us do that. And I would only assume that the intention was to say that they do it successfully, or they wouldn't otherwise be citing them. I'll point out two. Bill Ricker and Chumsen. Bill Ricker's had exactly the same number of competitive races in the last 70 years. I can only do seven instead of 10, because I can only go back that far in their information. In the last decade, Chumsen has had one, three-year terms, five-member board, one competitive race. In the information I gave you, just so nobody thinks I'm cherry picking, I took the communities with the 20% above us in population and the 20% below us in population, 40 towns, four. You know what two of those four are? Bill Ricker, Chumsen. So you might want to throw those two out, so you really get two out of 40. In addition, in that information, you'll have, after going through all 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, which I've bothered to take the time to do, 27% have three-member, I'm sorry, five-member, three-year elected terms. That's 27% of the entire state. Forty-four of that, what's 96? Forty-four of those, 45% have populations of less than 10,000 residents. 58 of the 96, or 60%, have 15,000 or less. 72 out of 96, 75% of those towns, have 20,000 or less in population. Tewksbury has over 30,000 people. We are not comparable to the places who are doing this. In addition, quite a number of those towns who do it have a different composition to their board, the number of people they have. It could be seven, it could be nine. I believe there was, I think it was 12 out of those, at least, that have a larger board. The reason that matters is because by having the larger board, one of the things I pointed out in the materials you have, is it alleviates the problem of not having enough members hold over after an election. If you moved to three years, you'd have two new members at a time, leaving only three members who've heard whatever's been going on potentially for months to vote. You bring in two new members, somebody's going to have to vote, either knowing very little about what's going on, and something could have been going on for months. Those other boards, they sometimes, those larger boards wouldn't have that issue, because the holdover members would be different. Okay, so then, just to finish on the other one, of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, only 24 have populations of 20,000 or greater and do the five-member, three-year terms. So, but what the petitions are asking you to do, proponents, sorry, are asking you to do is make Tewksbury only the 25th in the entire state of Massachusetts to do that. To join towns such as Monroe, Mass., population 121 people. Heath, Massachusetts, population 706 people. Florida, Massachusetts, population 752 people. Or, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to, Petersham, I believe it is, population 1,234. That's what you're being asked. This petition is not, or this article is not being put forward in the best interest of the 30-plus thousand people in Massachusetts. It's being directed at about 150 people, okay? In the hopes that saying little, explaining less, proving less, and hoping no one noticed is a sound political strategy, because you're trying to convince 76 people out of 150, who are likely to probably show up to town meeting, to vote on this. So you're not looking out for the 30K, you're trying to convince half of 150 people not to look at what you've just given and ask to improve, because you weren't given anything. You would just simply had it put in front of you and said, "Vote for this," with no, nothing, with nothing put forward to defend it, to prove it, or to say how it's really in the best interest of the town beyond saying, "We can," and "other people do it." There are a lot of questions here as to what that actually means, that need to be asked. They probably should be asked by the Board of Selectment before something like this goes forward. There isn't a monetary piece to this. That does not mean it couldn't cost the town, okay? It's hard to figure out, but I'm warning everyone, as I've done with other things, that if you do this without looking into everything that should be looked into first, before you vote on it, you're going to potentially pay those costs down the line. And for what? Because nobody wanted to take just a little bit of time to really look into who does this, why do they do it, and should we be one of them? I'm not even telling you you can't do it. Certainly something you can do. I'm not saying at the end of the day that maybe after it's looked into, you can make valid arguments for it. Maybe you can. I've heard none, seen none, and it's come back now a second time. The only real difference between this time and the last time was they happened to show up at our meeting just to tell us they filed it. That's literally the only difference between this time and that. I apologize, that's not correct. You were offered even less information this time than you were the last time. So there are two differences. They came to our meeting and said they filed it, and they didn't give you even as much information as they did last time. I suspect, because as your package showed, the information you were giving was at best misleading, and at worst, simply inaccurate. With some of the towns that they were citing as to who else does this and how they do it, some of them were appointed, some of them were cities, so they weren't even comparable anyways, because they create their boards, they don't elect them. The size of the boards weren't comparable, but no one made any reference to that. So you have a significant amount of information that I provided. You have nothing from the proponents beyond, again, a somewhat whole argument of, "Well, we think it'll cause more competition, we can do it," and, you know, that's it. Nothing more. You know, if, like I said, you guys have been given quite a bit of information. If you have any questions about what I gave you, I'd be happy to answer it, or justify it, or whatever it is you need, but I'm concerned, not that they've put something forward, they're certainly free to do so. I'm concerned that it's not being sent where it should be, to be reviewed thoroughly before a real recommendation can be made. And we're going backwards here. You know, we're getting less information, we're just getting the article put forward. Six months later, nothing's changed. And I hope that the recommendation from the board, which I would hope would be first, to request it be withdrawn, so that the Board of Selectment will have more time to look at it. But if that is not acceptable to proponents, then you recommend indefinite postponement, because this should not be passed like it is. It's simply not been vetted enough. That's, that's what I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you for providing the information that you, you did, and presenting your case, I guess, as it were. And we definitely respect and want to have input from somebody that's on the board currently, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson at this time?
Not questions, Mr. Chairman, but making a change like this does seem to me like there would need to be a compelling case, and I haven't heard that compelling case. So I'm inclined to recommend indefinite postponement unless I hear that case.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment from the public?
How you doing?
Hi.
Chris Mullins, 758, we'll actually have my name on the article. I think Mr. Johnson might be a no vote, but I'd like to talk to you guys about some of the reasoning behind this article. Yeah, maybe just get a little closer to the mic. Is that good?
Yeah.
Too loud?
Okay.
Don't obviate. Oh, okay. So this article is not about creating competition. This article is not a referendum on the planning board. This article is to give more opportunity, more often, for residents of Tewksbury to participate in local government. We've discussed this quite a bit, we've discussed this with, I think, 500 or some odd people in town who have supported this, in getting the petition to town meeting. From a financial component, I don't believe this does affect the town of Tewksbury. Do you have any specific questions in regards to the incident of the article? You know, I myself can't speak to the documentation that you were provided by Mr. Johnson, but if you have any questions, or you'd like to hear our side of that information, you know, we'd be happy to respond.
Chris D. Vaznavorian. Again, to make a change like this, to me feels like we need a compelling reason other than simply it'll increase competition, which I get.
So we're not saying competition.
Let's say it'll increase, you're proposing, you're theorizing that it'll increase the number of people who will run for the planning board.
We are theorizing that, correct.
But you have no evidence of that.
I mean, in a hypothetical situation, any positive or negative fix could happen. We have no evidence that it won't happen.
And any potential changes to the way the planning board is run right now could have a financial impact on the community, so.
It could or it could not, we don't know, we don't.
Again, I'm theorizing the way you're theorizing. So if I take that line of argument, unless I have something more compelling tangible, I just don't see myself supporting this article.
Okay, anybody else comment, questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. To add to the theoretical, and I purely, when I look at, I'm a member of the Finance Committee.
Sure.
I sit here and I look at things from dollars and cents, and what does it mean? What's the financial impact of this article going to have on the taxpayers of the town, of which you are one and I am one?
Correct.
And everybody here is one. So, is it, I also haven't heard a compelling reason. Maybe I could ask Mr. Johnson if there is an average length of time it takes the average-sized project to go through this span of the planning board process? Some projects go.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind coming up, Mr. Johnson.
So, so to answer your question, you don't, I can't give you a definitive answer, and that sort of what's in your package is part of the explanation, which is the, unlike other boards, the planning board doesn't work on the same sort of timeframe. You guys work when the budgets are due, you know, those kinds of things. It's very set. Ours are not set, so we could have a hearing that could last weeks, months. We've had hearings go nearly a year long before they can be finished, which means you've heard, you know, you could have heard 15, 16, 17 meetings worth of hearings before a decision is made, at which point, in the example here, two members have been changed over because of, you know, this change to be elected. You're talking about months potentially worth of testimony that those folks have not heard. Some people will tell you they couldn't come to the meetings, that they were thinking about money. I'm sorry, it's not the same as sitting out there at those desks. It's not the same as having the package that's handed to you. It's not the same.
All right, so.
You cannot catch up. So the answer to the question is, it could be anything from two weeks to a year, how long it can run.
All right, thank you.
I'm also looking at it, again, from the financial perspective.
Sure.
If I've invested six months of time on a project, reviewing a project, following through all the hoops and ropes and circles that you have to jump through with the state, there's a, there's a base of knowledge that one has to have, I think, to make an intelligent or a correct decision for the town of Tewksbury, based on what the town, based on what the town of Tewksbury needs. I don't see a compelling argument to change things.
So, something, you can have your. You know, if you think about what Mr. Johnson said, basically, no matter what the term limit is, no new members can come on board and be up to speed, because they need, you know, so much shrug away to actually get this to, well, I think, what I got to have. If you were, do you mind remembering, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
What was the, the second part of that question?
The second part was, was, I'll try to put it in different words. I haven't heard the compelling reason of why we need to change it.
So for us, you know, the town continues to grow, the town continues to expand, more businesses are coming in, more residents are coming in, more young families, and I think it's important to make sure that all those new residents are represented and have more opportunity to serve the community.
Which they do.
And they would have more opportunity to do so pending a three-year term.
That's, again, that's your theory.
Correct.
That's all I have.
Okay, anything?
I personally have not heard a compelling argument to either support or deny the article. Me personally, this was brought forth by the residents to have it voted upon, and I personally will not stand in the way of an article that financially, we can speak hypotheticals all day.
Sure.
But it's not my job to stop the residents from having their voices heard on an article, because it, it has no bearing as a Finance Committee. This is, should be at the Board of Selectment, and they should talk this through. But it's here in front of me now, and I'll, I stand behind it, because it's here, and I have to say yea or nay, and I'm not going to get in front of the residents. If this is what the residents want, I'll support that. And I'll let the body, I'll let the residents decide whether it's a go or no go. Now, you can say it's a five-year, then you have the three years. That's all semantics in an argument. But for me, I don't stand in front of the residents. If this is what they want, and they put, they, however it got onto this article for us to vote on, is here for us, and financially, it doesn't, I don't see it bothering me one way or the other. So I'll let the residents vote. If the residents want five years, then fine. If they want three years, then fine. We'll deal with that, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But to sit and talk about hypotheticals and what-ifs and all that, I know, I deal with facts, and the facts are what's in front of me right now, and that's how I feel about 17, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And as I said on Article 16, you know, given that it is a resident article, like Jason was saying, and it doesn't really have any impact to our financial budgets, I would support a no recommendation from the Finance Committee as well. But does, does anybody else have any? Motion for no recommendation?
Aye.
We need a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that brings us back to the beginning. Article 1. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me in the audience? Yes. Article 1 seeks to raise and appropriate $820,579,000 into FY22 departmental budgets. The $820,000 is available for appropriation because of two areas that have changed in our finances. The first being state aid has come in higher than projected by approximately $166,000. State aid itself increased $422,691, but our state and county assessments also increased Our public libraries offset increased $3,470. So the net result between our revenues and our assessments was an increase of 166, approximately $166,000 in new revenue for FY22. The other addition, we projected $850,000 in new growth. The assessor, based on what she is submitting to Department of Revenue, is projecting $1,508,000 in new growth, and an increase of $658,000. Most of that is in personal property. Of that new growth, about, over $300,000 in new growth was captured through an audit that was done this past year of personal property. I believe the chief assessor spoke to the Finance Committee about that when she presented her budget. We're hoping DLR certifies that amount. So right now, it's still an estimate, but there was an increase in new growth based above the projection I brought forward in, when I presented the budget. The money that is going into, into the budgets, going, is going into several areas. The first is treasurer-collector professional services, $10,000. The $10,000 will be used for payroll support and payroll training in the treasurer-collector's office. Right now, we have one person that is trained in payroll. That person is going to be on vacation, and we need someone to, we need to bring someone in to assist with payroll for that week. We also want to use the funds to train at least one or two other people in the office in payroll. It's very complex using munis and understanding what needs to be done in payroll, so we're projecting the need for support and training to be $10,000. Computer services, full-time salaries, we're asking for $45,000 to be added to full-time salaries to have the ability to take the part-time person that we currently have budgeted for and make that a full-time position. The person that's there part-time right now is leaving. The person that's there part-time right now is leaving. Once that person leaves, we'd like to advertise and hire a full-time systems operator in that position. Right now, and in the past at least 10 years, we've had only one person in that handling IT in the town. Under computer services, professional services, $30,000. We'd like to use that funding to, towards cybersecurity and preventing cyber attacks within our infrastructure. Funds will be used to assess what is needed, and then the remaining funds will be actually to implement what is needed. We're projecting $30,000 for that. And then finally, Treasurer, unclassified interest maturing debt, $735,579. This funding will be set aside for a future DPW slash school maintenance facility. We are finalizing the design and cost estimates for the project. We're hoping to bid it over the winter. We're hoping the climate for construction bids is better than what it is now. Currently, the project is projected to be $37.3 million. We plan to get that, to reduce that amount down further by using funding, funds we have in various reserves in town, and hopefully borrowing somewhere around 28 to 30 million dollars, depending on what the final cost estimate is for the project. But at least put some additional money aside into debt service in addition to what is already in the FY22 budget for, for potential funding of the DPW slash school maintenance facility. If we find that the bid climate is still higher than what it has been in the past due to COVID, we'll put the project off until the fall. But right now, we're hoping to, to bring it forward in May. So that's Article one.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to ask questions?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jay Kelly. The address is 22 Karen Lee. First, a general comment. Either my hearing is getting worse and worse, or the audio system here is absolutely terrible. I've made this comment in the past. Really don't know which it is, so I'm going to assume that the audio system here is terrible. You have an obligation to conduct a meeting that people can hear. I wish it'd be there. Enough about that. I have questions on two items. The first one is the computer services, full-time salaries. Do you fund a new full-time position?
I believe it's a half-time that's going to a full-time, is that correct?
That is correct. Currently, right now, we have a part-time position, approximately 20 hours a week, 20. And we would like to move that to being a full-time position.
All right, so that's a $90,000 position?
No, actually, the budget for that is, if you give me one second. It's going to be a grade, it's a non-union position. It will be a grade seven. Can you hear me, Jay? Can you hear me okay? Position, non-union, systems operator title with a salary range of $62,521 to $78,074.
Okay, so that was a position that was $62 to $78?
No, currently in the budget, we have, in a part-time position, we have in the budget
Could you say that again?
Currently in the budget, we have $20,800. And we're asking for an additional $45,000 to get us through November to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. All right, and that was for the full year because you didn't have the money to make it full-time?
We thought we could, we tried to get, we tried to, to go with a part-time person. That could work. It was difficult finding someone part-time that had all the skills we needed, but we also found that the workload warranted a full-time person. So we tried it, assessed it, came back with the recommendation that a full-time person is needed, and that, and that's why we're here today.
Okay, thank you for that one. The other one is the bottom one, the Treasurer Collector, Treasurer by interest maturing That one's, that one's required for fiscal, the next fiscal year, that one has to be paid.
So this is not debt that we've already borrowed. This is for debt that we may incur if we move forward with the DPW facility. In the FY22 budget, we set aside $3,599 already. We want to add to that with this money, so if in fact we bring the DPW project forward, we have the funding in the budget to pay for any future debt. So, borrowed yet, but we want to prepare if in fact we move forward with that project.
Okay, so this money has not been, okay.
It hasn't been authorized, and it hasn't been borrowed. If it's moved in May and is defeated, then this money would go to free cash. If it is approved, then we'll move forward with the project.
And what happens if it's not approved?
This 750, this 735?
Yes.
It'll just, it won't be raised, simply won't be raised in the budget.
And what's the approval process? Does the town meeting have to, have to approve that, the project?
So town meeting right now is just approving the debt service to be set aside. If we choose to bring the project forward in May, the town meeting will have a vote on the bond authorization, which is a two-thirds vote.
Then why does the town wait until May to see if that project is approved?
Because we need to recap, recap, we need to raise the money now and set it aside.
That, I'm sorry, I don't follow that.
So.
I'd recommend to the Finance Committee that you wait until the project is approved, until you appropriate the money. It doesn't make sense that the rules say you have to, until the project is approved, and you can't, that you have to appropriate the money before the project is approved. I'm sorry, that doesn't make sense, and that, so I'd recommend you appropriate the money until the project's approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly. And I apologize if you can't hear me very well, or I don't know if, is it, Mr. Kelly, is it, is it me that you can't hear, or is it others, or everybody, or it's everyone? All right.
Might be me.
I don't, I know we've had complaints before. Okay, if you, if you need, if you need anything repeated, just give me the high sign, and we can try to make it clear. Can everybody else hear that? Okay, so maybe it's a little both. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I just want to reiterate. We are just setting the money aside in debt service with the hope of bringing this project forward in May. We haven't borrowed the money, we haven't approved the project. The project still has a long way to go, including a two-thirds vote at town meeting for the borrowing, and part, two-thirds a vote to take money out of the stabilization fund if we choose to use the stabilization fund to help pay for it. So it still has a long way to go, but we're trying to put the building blocks in place and funding set aside so we're ready if the project does, does move forward. That's all we're doing at this point.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the computer services, professional services, 30 grand for cybersecurity. Is that something, cybersecurity, that's a scary, scary thing. Is that something we could possibly partner with area communities for cybersecurity?
Absolutely, and that's something we are going to look into. We actually are working on, we've actually been talking to some of the communities currently to, to meet at the end of October to discuss it more. So there may be an opportunity for grants in the future from a regional standpoint, but in case those things don't happen, we want to at least have money in place to start our own process. The schools right now have a company in place monitoring and handling cybersecurity for them. They spend approximately $60,000 a year on that firm, so we felt that we were at least half the size of that, of what they do, and we want to have some money to assess what we really do want to do with this $30,000, and that may come out with a recommendation to regionalize, but that's absolutely a possibility.
Yeah, I think regionalizing is a very good way to go because we could use the expertise of multiple areas. So that's my only question on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, do we have any motions on Article one?
I'll move to approve Article one, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Are you unanimous, four zero? Article two.
Article two raises $3,795.71 to pay for unpaid bills that came in after the fiscal year closed. The first is police details for the town of Bill Ricker for a DPW project in the amount of $232. Priority dispatch was, which is a software license for public safety, $2,244. WB Mason office supplies for the Treasurer Collector's Office, $704.71. And Comcast, $615, which is for our fiber, a fiber line that we have as a backup for the town hall.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, any from the committee?
You wouldn't happen to know what the bandwidth of that fiber line is, would you?
I don't offhand, but I can find out for you.
Okay, just wondering.
Any other questions, or do we have any motions for Article two?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Recommend approval?
Yes.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Are you unanimous? Article, Article three.
Article three is transferring $180,168 from certified free cash to fund the following projects. Last week, we received certification of free cash in the amount of $4,720,482. We're seeking to spend $180,168 of that on these projects. I'm finalizing a document for the Finance Committee in the Selectment outlining a breakdown and an analysis of free cash, but in essence, free cash was generated this year from local receipts being higher than we projected by $2,439,873. There was a turnback of budgets totaling approximately $2.3 million. Real estate and personal property was $1,039,000 higher. The state reduced our overall free cash by $1.2 million for grants that have not come in yet, and other funds that have not come in yet that are owed to the town that will come in during this fiscal year. State aid was $249,000 less than we projected. There was a payment in the fourth quarter that hasn't come in yet. We're hoping it comes in sometime this fiscal year. And then state assessments was $153,000 less than projected. So a bulk of the free cash is because of local receipts being higher than projected and the turnbacks from the town and school budgets.
And sorry, what did you say the total free cash was?
It was, it is $4,720,482.
All right, thank you.
The projects that we are looking to fund, the first is new carpet at the library. Previous, at a previous town meeting, $25,000 was set aside for carpeting at the library. We held those funds back until we looked at a little bit bigger project for the library. The project that we're planning to undertake will install new carpet at the entrance foyer, the children's room, teen space, offices, the elevator, the employee entrance, and part of the first floor. The total project is $90,000, $65,000 coming from free cash and 25 from a previous article at a previous town meeting. The second item we'd like to fund is $43,790 for police station renovations. Specifically, the funds will be to upgrade technology, specifically the audiovisual components of the roll call room. This is just the first phase in renovations to this area, and the future town meeting will come forward with other improvements to the roll call area, but we wanted to start with the technology. The boiler at the center fire station, $49,878, is needed to replace the boiler at the current center fire station. Even though the new fire station will be ready in December, we need to replace the boiler that's there now for a couple of reasons. The first is because obviously the fire department will continue to occupy the station for the next few months, but also after they move to the new center station, the plan is to move the school building maintenance operation into the fire department. They're currently leasing space at a location off of Washington Street. They're paying a rental fee, a monthly rental fee that we'd like to avoid in the future and move them into a space that the town owns. In addition to the building, to the school maintenance operation, the center school will be demolished in May of 2022. We'll need to find some additional space for administrative offices for at least six to seven months while the new offices are being built at the, at the new elementary school. So we're hoping we can use, or we're planning to use some of the office space that's in the center fire station for that timeframe. The $49,000, $49,878 will be for a new boiler. Once we've, we're prepared to demolish the current center fire station, the company that's installing the boiler said they could buy back the boiler for approximately $10,000. So that would be the plan. The next item, $9,500 for the Deputy Fire Chief Assessment Center. The current Deputy Fire Chief is retiring in January, and the plan is to conduct a civil service sanctioned assessment center to hire the next deputy chief. And we'll bring in a private firm to do that. And then finally, the fire rescue vehicle. The bid for the rescue vehicle that we funded this past May came in higher than we estimated. The amount that we had set aside at town meeting, or appropriated at town meeting in May 2021 was $190,000. May 2021 was $190,000. The bid came in at $202,000. So the additional $12,000 will be remaining funds needed for the rescue truck. And those are the projects.
All right, thank you. Does anybody from the public have any comments or questions? Seeing none, open it up to the committee for questions.
Why do you always look at me first? Because you know I always have questions? Just on the boiler center, the boiler for the center fire station, could we possibly use that elsewhere, like the North Street Fire Station? I don't know how old that one is.
So that was actually a question brought up tonight by another committee I was meeting with, and we'll look at that. They had mentioned could it be used at the Ella Fleming School if we renovate that? Could it be used at another station? We'll look at that before we actually do demolish the building because when we were looking for a boiler for this location, we were trying to figure out if there were any used boilers around, and there weren't. So we may try to repurpose it for another building. If not, we'll trade it back in.
Okay. That is it.
You're good, all right. Anybody else? Any motions on Article Three?
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Article Four seeks to transfer $150,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings to fund engineering services for the inspection, repair, and painting of, and other improvements of the Astle Street water tank. Water retained earnings were certified last week also along, when they certified, when the department of revenue certified free cash. Water retained earnings were certified at $2,421,795, just to give you an idea. That 2.4 mainly was made up of water rates coming in higher than projected. Water rate collection came in $1.1 million higher than projected. And as you know, last year was a dry year. We had some of our highest pumping from the water treatment plant than we've had in many years, so that added to the increased revenue. We also turned back $453,209 from the water distribution and water treatment plant budget, which added to retained earnings. And also that helped retained earnings, we carried over $247,000 from previous year's retained earnings that got added to this number. So that was a bulk of where retained earnings came from. The money that we're seeking to use it for, the Astle Street tank, is a 1 million gallon steel tank built in 1970. Repairs were made to the tank's exterior in the year 2000. Since numerous installations and reinstalations of cell tower, or cell carrier structures have been made on the tank, we want to review the structural integrity of the catwalk, the antennas that are existing. We want to move to the top of the tank at the cost of the carriers, not at the cost of the town. But we want to make sure that the tank structure is looked at. We want to look at the need for painting it and any other improvements since the last time something was done was in 2000. And that's essentially what this $150,000 would do, would give us an engineering and peer review of it.
Okay. Do we have any public comments or questions? Any questions from the committee?
I look that way first.
Well, since you look that way first, I do have one question since you brought up the cellular piece of that. Are the cellular carriers responsible for the maintenance of their antennas on that?
They are.
Okay. So if we found something that was structurally compromised, they would be responsible for fixing it?
They would.
Okay, thank you.
If it's caused by their antennas, yes.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion for Article Four?
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Okay, unanimous.
So Article Four is going to be amended, Article Five is going to be amended to add the summer money we will transfer into the stabilization fund. Article Five will seek to transfer $3,940,314 from certified free cash into the stabilization fund. And this money will be used for future town, for future town and school capital needs. One of them would be to assist in helping reduce the cost or the borrowing of a DPW school maintenance facility. As of town meeting in May, we had $7,188,996 in the stabilization fund. The town accountant's updating all of these funds for me to put in the handout for town meeting. But based on what we had available towards the end of the fiscal year, by adding this amount, the new amount we'll have in the stabilization fund will be at least $11,129,310.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from the residents? Any questions from the board, committee? No? So would we make a motion to recommend?
Adopt as amended.
Yeah, okay. Article as amended.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Chair votes aye as well, any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, just to go back to Article Three, that's going to be an amendment also to strike stabilization fund and just keep free cash.
Oh, Article Three, sorry, I was looking at Four.
Looking at Four.
All right, so strike through stabilization?
Yeah, strike through the words "or" the stabilization fund. It'll be certified free cash or some.
All right, so I will look for a motion to recommend approval of Article Three as amended.
Mr. Town Manager, is that going to be a scribner's error or?
No, that'll be an amendment. That'll be an amendment, yeah, because we posted it that way.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion to adopt Article Three as amended, striking out the stabilization fund.
I have a motion.
I'll second with another question.
Sure.
Library carpet. I know we did a lot of carpeting, a couple of months ago, we did a lot of transfers for police station carpet. Are they looking at economies of scale? Are they all the same carpet, same type, same?
I'm sure it's the same, well, I'd have to check with the facilities manager because the library has a different type of traffic than, say, the police station. It's the same, it is the tile carpet that we use throughout all of our buildings. He usually goes to the same vendors for pricing. I would just have to check on the grade and quality.
I'm sure the children's room is probably different than the.
Correct.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second to recommend adoption of Article Three as amended, striking out or the stabilization fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. I think we're on to Article Six.
Article Six, Article Six is a community preservation fund article. We're seeking to transfer $110,000 from community preservation fund undesignated reserve to be expended on drainage improvements at State Field, at Saunders Recreation Area on Livingston Street. The community preservation committee met earlier tonight and voted unanimously to support this article. Essentially, what the plan is to improve drainage on the field where there is the youth football practices and where there is a cricket pitch. The plan is to install drainage underneath the field where the cricket pitch is and where the football practices, to put gravel, loom, and sod back over where the drainage is installed to pitch the area differently so everything drains into the wetlands and the culvert in that area. When we had talked about this last week, there was a question about whether there'll be drainage under the soccer field. It won't, but there should be improvement to the soccer field because of the improvements at the football field. The soccer field right now drains fairly well. We're also working with mass mosquito control to clean the culvert in that area so it drains properly. But the project will improve the drainage of the standing water that takes place after a rainstorm in that area in this past year. Games and recreation events down, they had to be postponed because the water wouldn't drain for days. So it's something we've been looking at, and the prices that we receive from a drain layer, from a landscaper, the project's $110,000.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public like to ask any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is the last money article in the warrant. If that's the case, and if town meeting follows the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which I think are in line with the town manager's requests, when we get to town meeting, will someone be ready to tell us what those recommendations will mean in terms of the next fiscal year's spending and the tax rate for the next fiscal year and average tax bills for taxpayers?
So do you typically put that on the handout, Richard, or?
So the handout will be as usual, will have all the funds, all the expenditure, the dollar amounts being expended in each area. I will, I've already started looking at the tax impact, Mr. Kelly, and I want to, before I give a number, I want to talk more to the chief assessor about it. But we'll be ready to answer that question also. So.
All right, thank you.
The tax, the tax questions are, you know, because we're, the tax impact is in Article One, which is the $820,000, and Article Two, which is the unpaid bill. The only thing that we need to figure out is it's mostly new growth, and we had new growth, it's mostly in personal property. I just don't know how much is a residential impact compared to a commercial, personal property impact.
Right, thank you. Okay, any questions from the committee? Do we have any motions on Article Six?
Motion to adopt the article.
Motion and a second to recommend adoption of Article Six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed?
Article Seven is an article that we've seen in the previous, previous town meetings that we're taking these parcels that are listed in this article and placing the parcels under the control of the Conservation Commission and putting these parcels designated as conservation use only and protecting them, putting a protection on them. This is something that has come forward through the Open Space and Recreation Committee, and the committee is following the plan that was put together, the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which has identified town-owned parcels which should have a restriction placed on them. All of these parcels will be designated conservation use only. We will have maps identifying where each of the locations are at town meeting, but we have reviewed them internally. We have talked to all the departments to make sure that none are needed for any town purposes, and none of them are. And we'd recommend that, we'll be recommending the town meeting approve all the, all the parcels to be restricted.
Do we have any questions from the public? Any questions from the committee, Rich?
We don't have to correct any spelling errors in the executive summary, do we?
I don't know, do we?
You got one for us? Maybe we can submit a scribner's error.
Conservation Commission to promote and protect. We have "in perpetuity," I think it's "in perpetuity."
I think it's correct. We've gone, this is, we've.
It's lawyerized.
Yeah, it's been lawyerized. I had it wrong before, and you're correct. I have a very good editor on the warrant, so. There is a scribner's error in Article One, one of the articles, the next one, but we'll double-check that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any motions on Article Seven?
Motion to adopt Article Seven.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Article Eight.
Article Eight seeks to authorize the Board of Selectment to grant an easement to National Grid to essentially run poles and cables and conduit and wires across town property in order to connect the solar facility that was installed at Sutton Brook to the National, to National Grid's power. The project is complete, the last stage to make the connection is running these poles and wires. There is a scribner error in the executive summary. Instead of saying the new elementary school, it should say the Sutton Brook, solar facility at the Sutton Brook landfill. We'll identify that in the handout.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, any from the committee? Do we have any motions on, what are we, on Article Eight? Yep.
I'll motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Unanimous. Article Nine.
Article Nine is seeking town meeting approval to authorize the Selectment to sell parcels of land in accordance with the town bylaw. We've had residents request the purchase, purchase of these two parcels to add to their property. We've done this in the past. We actually just finished a fairly large land sale to Abuddas this past week. And this is, again, land that we've identified is not being needed for any town or municipal purpose, and we want to move forward and seeking authorizations to sell it to the Abuddas.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience on Article Nine? Seeing none, any from the committee?
So the, so the.
Rich?
The person buying it would pay the assessed value?
They would pay the minimum, is the assessed value plus other fees we would charge, such as recording fees, lawyers' fees, things like that. And we always look to make sure there are no outstanding taxes because they would be responsible for that also.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? All right, unanimous. Article Ten.
Article Ten is a zoning change that was brought forward in the rewrite of the zoning bylaws this past year at the request of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and Mass DEP. It updates the groundwater protection district to include institutional controls in that area to ensure that either development or improvements are made to parcels in the area that would cause issues with groundwater, especially because of the closed Sutton Brook landfill. This is something we've worked with EPA and DEP on over the past probably year. Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick drafted the bylaw that eventually they approved. And again, it's just putting institutional controls in the groundwater protection district in this area. in the groundwater protection district in this area. Article Eleven, you could take them both together, outlines the map of the area that will reflect the institutional controls for the town to be in compliance with its consent decree for the Sutton Brook disposal area.
So Article Eleven is the map that goes with Article Ten, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any questions from the public? Any questions, comments from the committee? I don't know if we want to take both of these together because it doesn't really make sense to pass one without the other, but what is, what do we want to do here?
I think we should do it one at a time.
One at a time, okay. You want to make your motion?
I'll motion to adopt Article Ten.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye on Article Ten?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed?
And I'll also motion to adopt Article Eleven.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on Article Eleven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I should have mentioned the planning board voted to approve both articles that are here at their past meeting. And letters went out to the Butters in this area notifying them of the zoning change.
Okay. Good to know.
Article Twelve?
Article Twelve.
Article Twelve seeks to change, authorize the selectmen to file with the state legislature to file a home rule petition to amend the town charter to replace the term Board of Selectmen with Board or, and then change the term selectmen, change the term Board of Selectmen to Select Board, change the term Selectmen to Board, and change the term Chairman to Chair. And then just to go on to Article Thirteen and Fourteen, Article Thirteen does the same to change those terms in the general bylaws. And Article Fourteen changes them, those terms in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this one? On actually, these three, more or less the same thing. Anybody from the committee?
I have a question on or comment on Article Thirteen. I believe in our zoning bylaws under section 2.20, point 020. It references the word vice chairman.
I believe that the way this is written, anywhere it says chairman will be changed to chair.
So that was just a comment. And again, purely from looking at it from a dollars and cents standpoint, I asked myself, what's the financial impact of this article going to be on the taxpayers of the town? So will we immediately have, is this like a re, I'll call, is it a re, it's like a rebranding? Will we be, will we be immediately changing all stationary, letterhead, envelopes, business cards, et cetera, with the new name? If so, what's that cost? And are there any large signs or around that say Board of Selectmen that need to be redone?
I haven't done that type of an analysis, but I don't think it would be a great impact or cost impact to us.
Could we reuse our current supplies until they are exhausted?
Probably. And usually we, we don't, we don't do a lot of printing of letterhead. We have it on the computer and generate it through that. It's not like the old days where you would generate nice paper and print it up. Envelopes, probably will exhaust those if any. So I don't anticipate a great deal of cost.
Okay, if we, if we could use what we have, that'd be great. And the second question, contracts. Do we, will we need to amend contracts that we have to reflect the name change?
Eventually we will.
What's the cost of that?
We'll probably wait till they expire and then make change then. Just because to go back and have to get all the parties involved. But it's mainly moving forward with our bylaws and our charter. And for the most part, we're already, without the adoption of these articles, have moved in the direction of using these terms when addressing the board, all the chairs.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just looking at it from a dollar and cent.
Again, I don't anticipate it being anything critical.
Any other questions or comments? Any motions on Article Twelve?
I'll motion to adopt Article Twelve.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? It's unanimous.
I'll motion to adopt Article Thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Article Thirteen to recommend adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? It's unanimous.
Make a motion to adopt fourteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on Article Fourteen to recommend adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Unanimous. Article Fifteen.
Article Fifteen is a standard street acceptance article for Robbie Terrace Way. The Board of Selectmen have approved the layout and acceptance of Robbie Terrace Way. The planning board has approved it. The town engineer has reviewed it and recommended it for approval. And it's, there's a map available in the town clerk's office for review with the proper layout. But everything seems to be in order for acceptance at town meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the residents? Any questions, comments from the committee?
Motion to adopt Article Fifteen.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of recommending adoption of Article Fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Unanimous. We've already covered Article Sixteen and Seventeen. I believe that brings us to the end.
I believe you're right.
A motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, Chair votes aye, any opposed? All right, that closes the public hearing, thank you very much. Oh, and we need a final motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion with your.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? All right, we are officially adjourned, thank you.